I think. The general consensus after the last session, I should say, speaking with council members, speaking with Marlene and speaking with Karen, I think two things became available. Number one, there was a need demonstrated need for the truck. Please feel free to chime in if that's not what is accurate or an understanding. The need for the truck also is because we're six years out, but I think the demonstrated need was that you're going to be doing electrical repairs over the six years that are going to be costly and won't keep the truck effective because they've already tried it. The second thing that we heard during that meeting was that there's going to be needed engine emission upgrades that are going to probably be a bit costly. So that's going to hit us. And rather than do that, we investigated a new truck. The dependability issue is separate. Some of the things when we visited the truck, I heard that there is some safety sometimes. If they have to pull the tanker out, they don't have the lines of communication, the other tanker in reserve, they don't have the lines of communication that are available. Communication becomes hard, they can't see one another. So there was an issue there. After the meeting, Karen and I have spoken and Marlene and I have spoken. Marlene is confident that she can find $200,000 within her budget this year to put towards a down payment. Karen, I think we've, you've determined that you were kind enough to share with me. There seems to be about anywhere between 400,000 to 600,000, being on the high side. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We feel very comfortable with four, putting a $600,000 total for a down payment on the truck. That's if we understood you guys correctly when you came in. We're probably a year and a half out, close to, if we order today. And that year and a half, we feel that we're confident that we'll be able to build some reserves, build the funds necessary to pay for the remaining balance of the truck. If I've gotten something wrong, Karen, chime in. Now, what we need to be able to do is kind of hash out if that, if that's an accurate depiction of where we're at, if that's an agreement. What are some of the concerns moving forward that maybe we've missed or need to address? And maybe you guys can chime in there. I think that's where we're at.
Karen, again, how much do you say?
I would be comfortable with 400,000.
400?
Yes.
Okay.
We've had a couple of years where we've had excess, you know, we brought in more than anticipated plus putting back some money that that would be fine.
We've, we got 400, Marlene's got 200, but she's got another 200 in two years. Is that correct?
No, that's, we've still got to speak to Marlene moving forward. That's something that's a possibility, Bill. I don't mean no as in that's not accurate.
As of today, it's 600,000.
As of today, we would have 600,000, which is 50% if we understood that. We know those are moving numbers, roughly 50% of the truck bought in another year and a half. I think we could probably build the funds to, to pay it off based upon our conversation. And I think Marlene will be able to contribute towards that, but I don't want to say the amount without speaking to her directly.
She mentioned something the other day, that's why I asked.
You're exactly right, but definitely want to confirm that.
Okay. To Terry, we're talking outside a little bit, so, you know, I'm just equating it back to used farm implements. I, I know how that works, you know? You don't need it anymore. You sell it to a smaller operation. Disclose all the problems you have with it. How, how do you get rid of these fire trucks? When you sell it to, you sell it to a smaller town that don't?
We try to, we do try to. There's not a lot of value in them. Our last truck that we sold, we sold for $30,000. That's, see how much we're paying for one now to a smaller department south of here. If that doesn't happen, then we can put it into an auto trader, just like cars and campers. They have that one for fire truck traders, same thing. And some of those companies will come and buy it from that. But they may not give you what you want. And the market's really not that good.
How old is this machine?
Sixteen, sorry. Go ahead.
Sixteen.
So it's depreciated that, that much?
Yeah, yeah, they really do. They just don't, there's not a lot of resale, even if you buy a brand, if we would buy one brand new today and try to sell tomorrow, we'd be half. People, it doesn't fit. If it doesn't fit your department, you know, it's, it's like buying a riding lawnmower and having a real small yard. You got a good deal on the mower. It's the same president as what we're looking at. And there will be some value to it, but I can't quote on what it is. I, I really couldn't tell. We got our price in the last one out of that trader magazine. We seen a vehicle that was roughly the same year, was just a little bit different on pump size and thing that we had. So that's kind of where we took our price and offered it to the department south of us. And they, you know, they were, their trustee was really against all of it until we talked to her and said, you know, you can't buy a car with 30,000. You're going to have a fire truck to be able to take, upgrade your fire truck 25 years, $3,000.
And, and this machine is how old, the one that we purchased?
It's brand spanking new off the line. Now, one of the things I did communicate in that little briefing was that Bobby Cooper, Terry, both Jerry also chimed in that this unit that we're buying, we could find a more, I won't say affordable, but a lesser price, but you're getting what you paid for. And doing a little bit of research following up on what Bobby said, you can get a cheaper machine, you're not getting dependability, nor are you getting the lifespan off of this thing. Several things about the, the unit that you guys are proposing that was very appealing. High reviews, anywhere between 25 to 30 year lifespan, pretty confidently. The aluminum makes a difference. You got a body that can be swapped off the chassis. So if we're looking at future upgrades, that's important. You're going to get those emissions controls that you need coming in to the rig, so you're not worried about your upgrades. Plus, there's a lot more storage on this thing, which was an issue that when we were taken out to the rig. So there was a lot of checkboxes that this thing checked. Whether or not, I, I mean, in my opinion, it justifies the added cost, especially if you're looking at the difference between buying a headache at $600,000, that's going to last you eight years before you're starting to put money into it. And that's the reviews, that's not them saying it versus buying this rig.
And I know when it comes to trade ins, if you buried it in, you can probably sell it to a scrapper for the same, for more.
Exactly. Part it out.
Yeah. But I mean, they usually have more aluminum in them than what they're willing to pay you, getting money.
And that's what some, that's what some of the trader companies do for parts, but
Yeah.
You know, after 16 or 20 years, they don't make those parts anymore.
The bad thing is most apartments our size are bigger, they're all buying it. It's all like Monterey, Myers Ford, they can't really afford them anyways, you know? That's the only people you're selling used fire truck to, so your market's not really there for used fire truck.
Yeah.
That kind of surprises me because you should just drive through rural Indiana and you see little, little pockets everywhere of small birds, you know? And you would think there'd be a need out there, hopefully, maybe.
Yeah. You'd also see a park on the side of the road.
You sure guys back.
It's a guy's yard, I know.
Just for the grandkids for that price.
Has Notre Dame painted on the side.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Girl in the back, there you go, you got your sale right there.
But the birds have, like, um. Let's do that. In the, all the years that I've been here, we went down that road a lot of times, selling vehicles, put them up for bids, nobody bids, or somebody bids $700, like, ugh, that kind of hurts when you, you know, it's worth more than that to a small department.
Right.
That doesn't have the budget to buy it. And that's downfallable.
Yeah, when you get offered 7,000, it makes you want to give it to somebody that needs it rather than.
Just. So it's the first time in a long time we've purchased a new fire truck?
We have purchased a new fire truck every five years up till the ladder truck, and it's been six years. Because the number on that was more than what we had planned to have the money for. We went extended that six year and come up with the, in the budget, be able to pay that extra payment. So instead of the five year rotation, that would mean it's six. So now we're trying to get back on a five year rotation.
And the new unit too has more bells and whistles and more upgrades than the current units you have.
Well, it has modern, modern, it's not bells and whistles, but it's modern day. You know, like one, one little LED light is $500.
Right.
Being for us to buy it.
Rather than a light bulb.
Exactly. Or you go to, you know, collagen bulb, stick it there, last six weeks or something, five bucks, you know?
Right.
But those kind of things and, and the standards have changed since this truck we built. So the new one in that's built, is built to standards that are in place now, which are constant, are a constant change, constantly, constantly, you do this and that.
I have a question on, on this that you gave us last week, for the last time we met. It says grass five is in 1995, and in '24, it's going to be 29 years old. When is that one actually scheduled to be replaced?
That one's usually scheduled when, when we replace a tanker. We try to, we try to slide them in out of rotation of the five years, five, the big vehicles are the ones who are five years. And then we try to get, but if our grass rest running and up, up and going, that is definitely going to be scheduled to be redone.
Yeah.
But that's when we were buying grass trucks back then, that was $56,000. And we did it ourselves, put the pump in. The last grass truck we got was $120,000. And if we go to buy a grass truck now, I'm sure you're looking at it. I mean, that's just.
Just the way it's been going.
That's the way it's going. It's not us, anybody, any dealer you talk to.
What are you using for backup right now?
Backup?
Yeah, when that, yeah, you had mentioned last time.
Actually, the tanker or the ladder, that pumps on.
Okay.
Tanker actually has enough water to use that.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have the seating to.
That was the safety communication that Jerry shared with me.
Because I have it.
That's, you're looking, you're pretty confident if I have my notes right, five to six years, you can maybe get that another five or six years out of that tanker?
Oh, I hope so.
Yeah. I just wanted to, I had it in my notes.
I know it's the older one of the two, but like I, like I said, we don't run that all the time. They believe just rural fire, you know, out in the country because it's a tanker. And in town, we have tighter water that we use. So we, it doesn't run as much. The engine runs every single call all the time. So around a hundred times a year, that truck's starting up and wow, going. Rook tanker's probably running 25, 30 ones in there. Without running it as much, it's, it's blasting longer. Not going to, when it's going to get us another five years. I mean, I'm not saying that we might have to put money into it to make it last that five years, but.
But it could be.
The one you're looking at replacing, is that 35 years old?
No. Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. So the other one is thirty, one of them's 35, right?
I think we have a grass truck, I believe, is the oldest that we have.
Where am I getting that 30?
You don't understand Terry years, Terry lives in the old years. Plus our.
Maybe we've been around too long here, or I'm like, it must have been 35 years by now.
Our old grass trucks are 95, the tankers are about 10.
Oh, okay.
They're not, no 35 years. Terry was still chasing candy on the street during a parade. But yeah, not open without it.
And sorry, I wasn't at the first work session. What's Marlene's commitment financially?
Right now, we've got established on a phone call at 200 this year.
Okay.
Firm, pretty firm on that.
Basically for the down payment, safe interest.
And you getting 400 from the town?
Yeah.
Is there, speaking with Karen, establish that for this year for the down. So that gives us 600, that's going to be about half at 1.2.
I'm just going to want, is that the gap?
Year and a half out, according to best estimates, so gives us some time to build fundage.
Okay, engine one, this list, replace, replace engine one. This list, right? It's two engine ones, one's the old one.
There's only one engine one, the other's the ladder, ladder one?
It says engine one up here, the engine one down here. Does that engine one replace this engine one?
That is, that's the same engine.
Yeah.
Order it 2024, take delivery in 2026. Sell, sell on the one above and buy on the one below.
Right.
So that's what state will be placing that.
That's the, also, it's going to call engine one, it's the rest, engine one.
Yes.
Any question? When is the price locked in? You order, deliver it.
That's what we heard last time, you signed the contract, you're locked.
When you sign the contract.
Okay.
So day one. Those are, was one of the few that actually box in the price the day you signed the contract. I know here's, they do, there's a clause in there that.
Yeah.
They can adjust based on.
It's like more significant.
Yeah, it can. And Lumen's running into that right now. Where the engine that they ordered like two or three years ago is now significantly more than they have.
And reading too, a little bit, a little bit of reading, surface reading, it doesn't look like it's getting cheaper.
Yeah.
So the 600 that we have between the township and the town would be an upfront payment?
Depending on how they want their money. I don't think they want it like that, but whatever they're asking for, I don't, the last time it was a chassis, we bought the chassis, given that much money. I don't know what it was, you remember what it was? I think it was like, before, I don't know, I want to say for this one, it's like 572 is the chassis prepayment, or if we pay for that upfront, they knock 40,000 off. I think that's.
So the lease cover to get the, get it in line to build.
Yeah.
Services are down money.
Yeah, it's holding you in a placement. In other words, like the schedule, it takes so long.
One thing, your prepayment, and we're not technically allowed to prepay anything. So last year, the state did pass legislation that allows us to pay a certain amount as down payment ahead of time. That's something that we're going to have to ask the ordinance on. So we have a little bit of work to do, but it's not difficult and it's allowable. So that's available to us now because of these situations.
Because Marlene, last time, paid her half.
Yeah.
In advance and that paid, and that paid for all the, yeah, true. Stuck with the beginning and then we filled the half.
So we'd have to come up with a 600K gap between now and that 18 month period, or we'd be pulling out of a rainy day or general thunder.
We'll find it, so.
Mm-hmm.
But in the meantime, now that the, well, hopefully the comprehensive plan will pass tonight, and I've got some work to do, I've been waiting, wanting to do for quite some time is work on a financial plan. So we can start kind of creating a roadmap as far as when we get, you know, when we get our, our property tax draw, we're going to put X amount into one fund for a fire truck, X amount into a fund for ambulance. So we start putting money aside for, for those long-term capital investments, rather than it's just all residing in the, in the general fund right now.
Yeah.
So I want to get some organization. And then, you know, year stopping, however long I'm here, when the new clerk treasurer comes in, that's established and we're putting money aside now for a future payment.
Makes sense.
Yeah. See, if it's, if it shows as being designated, then they know that that's what it's for, rather than, gee, we just have a big healthy general fund.
Right. Keeps the ultras from.
Yeah. Picking at it.
Or thinking you have money and really don't because you're supposed to be planning it out.
How is the department heads talking about? How does a grass truck number five, like that's going to fit into our annual budget in '25 and '26? How did that get into the budget?
Well, they asked for it, number one.
Along with what we decide.
Send it, it would be awesome, though, but that would probably be.
Discussion later.
Yeah. And we also put aside money within the budget too for, for some smaller items, not necessarily that expensive of a grass truck, because stuff has gone up significantly in the last three or four years.
Actually, this buying of this truck was actually supposed to be a tanker and a grass truck. That is how it's scheduled, that's how it's scheduled in Marlene's plan also, but skipping around that because of the need overwhelms those two vehicles.
I think that some of the Karen's been asking, or at least put on my radar, is going around to each department and trying to get a five-year understanding of what our capital investments are going to be in terms of equipment, stuff, where we're at, what our current assets are, basically. And then what, how do we schedule that out so we can be a little bit more forward thinking of the budget and not having large vehicles that overlap between departments trying to make those payments? So we can kind of build a schedule of purchase and anticipate what the needs are. That will be done probably moving into the budget season at fall.
It's just an ongoing conversation.
Sure.
I know with the ladder truck, we, we hit the budget annually for X number of years that, yeah, Terry was basically paying back the general fund because we finance part of it out of general fund, right? When is that one done?
That was done last year.
Okay, that's good.
Terry, if this truck is a million two, I mean, we're using 600,000. So I'm going to say this truck's a million two. And the truck arrives, do we have some additional expenses for equipment?
There might be minimal. Most of the things that are in the engine now will go on the, in the new engine. Maybe, there might be a little bit, but not much, I don't think. The hoses transfer over, I mean, we use that along nozzles, they just go one truck to the other. The radio's been going from one truck to another, installation of the radio and things like that. Now that's an extra that we have to pay for.
I think what they might be getting back, getting at is, is there, should there be some kind of contingency of 5% above the million two for what you're saying?
Well, usually that money.
Would that be prudent, or would that be in your normal budget?
Usually, usually I use that as the budget, budget money. Because it's a smaller amount, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars, you know, it's like $4,000 or $3,000 for radio.
I think what he's trying to say is, you know, no surprises.
There's always something small like that.
Understand, but, you know, the more you can spend that upfront and plan for it, the better off we'll be.
Right. And it's always been that way ever, one I've ever.
I understand.
Only been on the southern part of the earth.
So it doesn't hurt to talk about it.
Right. And there will be some small things, but I guarantee it, but.
Is there any merit in keeping the old one?
Won't change your, it won't change your, our insurance rating.
Hang on, I have storage space for it, right?
I have a place to put it.
Does it have any sound value or trade in?
No, no, we went over that, not really.
Too old.
Just not much resale value in them. Nice to find somebody that would want to do, get this, get this old plasma for 30, so.
Well, I guess my point is, is that there's not much residual value in this. And I understand that the big elephant in the room is where you'd store this thing. But on the other hand, you have an engine, you've got a tanker, and you've got a ladder. But what if your new engine goes down?
That's why I asked if you're using the tanker as a backup. The only other problem that I foresee with using the existing truck as a backup is now we're going to go have to re-equip it or equip the new one because you just got done saving your.
Well, that's a good point.
And we kept, we kept engine two for a lot of years. That, that was a good backup and we use that for mutual aid runs. If we get called a permit for Argus or something, we'd run that and keep our frontline equipment in town. We ran that second or third out on grass fires where we didn't need a lot of extra equipment and it worked really good for that. And then in the times the frontline engine did go down, we could move stuff over and move into that. I think, I think this engine will be a great backup. I think it'd have more value as a backup than it does selling.
Do you be supportive of it as a backup?
I think so.
Just got to find a place to park it.
Do you have room in your backyard, Bobby?
Right next door to you. So that would mean, so going back to Bill's question about equipment and additional equipment, that would change your answer, would it not? No?
Yeah. The new ones, the new one, it built into that spec, it comes with ladders, comes with some limited hand. You know.
Wouldn't change a lot, right?
Yeah, stuff, stuff that we, the life supports, I mean, we replace those.
Yeah. I would think though, I mean, if you, and I'm only looking at the point that, you know, something would go bump in the middle of the night on the new one, at least.
Still have the tanker as a backup? It is also has a, it also is a pump, has a pump on it?
Well, no, my point is though, is that the equipment that's on the existing, the equipment that'd be on the new one could be transferred to the backup. Because I'm assuming that it's not going to be down for one or two days. I'm concerned.
I, I, I can't answer that, I don't know. Never had one really go bad except the ladder, and that was a issue that can't, it was us to, or it being down at any length of time.
And get that one in the garage, right?
And having two, we have two pumps besides the engine. The ladder, the ladder also has a pump on it too. If we need to pump water, we have that ability. As an insurance rating, it doesn't have water and that's what insurance for companies want.
Got a little bump on the insurance rating with the new one?
No, no, there will not.
I think you mentioned last time, I just didn't have any of that.
It'll put us right where we need to be for insurance ratings. Be able to have two vehicles with two columns and over 1,000 gallons of water, that's what they want.
So Terry, we did the, a bit of a capital campaign last time, a fundraising, a lot of effort from you guys. It's still fresh, I think, and the probably donors' minds of the people that did participate in that, is that something you see being possible or do we need to figure out something else?
I, I do not see us beating the bush to get money because this is not a specialty vehicle like the ladder was. It has a lot, brings a lot of things to the table. This brings firefighting 101. Every town, every place has this truck that goes to fires, everybody. And so you say that's the taxpayer, why are we paying extra? I mean, we would love to have donations, don't get me wrong, to help with this. And there are some people out there that might donate money to help us if they feel the need, but I don't know that going out and soliciting, you have to, is the right answer.
I just wanted your input on that.
Big sales, girl. Thank you though.
Big sale.
It's a lot of work. We just raised a little over 100,000 for C Y C and it's like putting on a wedding every year. It's a lot of work just for that little amount of money. I know that's a lot of money, but it's a lot of work just to get to that number, let alone at 600.
Where are we on the academy payments? Pardon?
They had five years at 20,000, I believe those are done as well.
Yeah, but where are they now roughly in the third year?
For the aerial truck?
Yeah.
No, they're done.
They're done? Is that a possibility that we approach them?
That's up to you guys.
Well, I understand.
Agreed to making a contribution to emergency services.
Okay.
But not necessarily a specific piece of equipment again. But we're going to have to ask it again because they're not going to hand it over unless we ask. Let, remember the years they just skipped that contribution?
It wasn't asked, so yes, currently, right now, they give us $30,000, which is split between.
And they were doing that 20 for the ladder truck in addition, Bill. It's the 20 that's done.
But you're saying we still need to make an ask for 30 or they won't?
I would think so.
And for additional? Yeah, you need to make the ask for additional. So I've, I've been taking care of that 30 and ask, which they committed because you guys were up there.
And they were good for it being multiple years, but we didn't put anything in writing. It was just a commitment and a handshake. And Karen would send the note, please make the contribution, and they would do it. But I mean, that, if, we've always built that into the budget, the contribution, right? And we've, it's part of his revenue, if you will. So it's not like we've built it in there just. And we've, it's part of his revenue, if you will. So it's not like we've built it in there just for a fire truck. It's built in for fire.
I think that could be a good avenue. You can try to approach them and tell them what's going on and the inflation of this situation was caused it to be this kind of money.
You say they mean academy.
Yeah, yeah, we just need to keep them apprised of our situation every year.
There's people that.
And you, when you skip it, they're gonna think, well, everything's fine and dandy. Well.
Sure.
Not, everything's not fine and dandy.
I mean, the more they build, the more we have to prepare for.
I was just about ready to break that up. Yeah, they've got, they've got about five new buildings over there, they're gonna want. To, uh, to ensure that there is adequate response, so.
Aren't they asking for a height theory that's on the building right now? How would I know that?
Yeah, I know you guys do annual fundraising for the fire department or the, um. I don't know what the special fund is, but if you center that, if you, if you. Messaged upcoming events like Fireman's Fest or Corn Roast, et cetera. Could it be targeted toward, we're raising money for our truck purchase? And is it significant enough to make any difference or would it draw other people in?
Our fundraiser that we have usually is honorable during the, during that time of the year. And, um, the money that we bring in for that has been anywhere from fifteen to three thousand dollars. It's not substantial.
It's not a fifty.
It's basically kids' things, you know, we're giving up the top and.
Yeah, it's enough to cover you for like Halloween treats.
Yes, we can buy stuff for next year.
Enough to keep popping the core for the guys to have a cold pop after a call and throw some candy out at the parades.
It's not, there's no money there for the workplace.
And I would wanna change how.
You know, in this conversation, I think that strategic ask to maybe direct larger sources. Um, such as the academy and individuals within that organization. Might be appropriate, but we don't wanna go out and door knock and I've heard that several times now. Okay.
I know there was a recent meeting at the county about emergency services. Are the other departments communicating with each other across the county about this issue? Do you guys feel like that's happening?
We've been having, I've been having a chief's meeting every, almost every month and that, that did come up and. Sounds like that got turned down too, but. Probably they were trying to get that.
I know John Grolik approached him and I remember reading about that in the newspaper. So they're not interested in doing the special tax for emergency services, in other words.
Well, it looks like we've got six hundred thousand.
So we've got six hundred thousand. What I'd like to do is. Start the process. Do we have to talk to Marlene one more time before we do that? Because she is responsible for that.
I've got three things down on the list of things to checkbox it before we do the council meeting at the end of the month. I think that's maybe, and I defer to the council, but I think that's gonna be the ask of the official. Karen's brought up the fact that we have to draft ordinance, have that ready. We need to confirm the three hundred thousand with Marlene. And then we need to get you guys activated and then we'll bring it to the council for the end of the month meeting. And they can go from there.
And that way, it could, that number couldn't be in stone and we'll know, you know, where it's at.
That's what I'm asking.
And understand too, that we, we have to take our time to get down and really get into this spec really good. Uh, the number's not gonna go up, I'm trying to say that.
I've got you, yeah.
I, like I expressed in the last meeting, these, these specs are about two hundred and twenty pages long. So we have to make sure, and, and every line item you change, changes the, changes the. Cost, but then if you do that after you sign a contract, there's a change order fee to handle. So.
Makes sense.
You know, we, we have to take our time to go through this and, and fine tune every little detail. And quite honestly, I wasn't gonna do that until we had a good commitment from the town, because it's, it's a lot of time, a lot of work.
And that's where, that's where we'll go. Um, I'll talk with Marlene and confirm everything with Karen. Um, and then we'll go and we'll get that ordinance started. And I'll make a confirmation with you guys and you can spec it out and give a price and then we'll bring it to the council on. The Thursday, the twenty, the seventh, I'm sorry, I'm sleeping, but yeah, thanks. Twenty-seventh, all right?
I mean, if we got, you know, it's a fifty-fifty between Marlene and the town and the civilian two. Basically, her commitment's gonna have to be six hundred. Is that not correct?
In the end.
In the end.
So once we get, take possession of the vehicle, the rest of the money is due.
Correct.
So however.
But does she, but, but do we?
We need to have some discussions with Marlene.
I was gonna say.
We need to this.
That's why.
Does that hurt us right now that we can only do four hundred, you know what I'm saying, of the six hundred, of the six hundred? Oh, you say we got.
So we're doing four hundred, she's doing two hundred, so that's six hundred.
Right.
So then at the other, at the, the flip side, we'll have two hundred, she'll have four hundred. But we also have the discussion with Marlene.
That's exactly. Number one on the list.
Assuming she can do that four hundred.
That's, that's what, yeah.
So, or is it a special where we need to, we need to step up a little bit more on the town side? And maybe, you know, change some parameters going forward, knowing that, you know, she's getting squeezed out by. You know, decisions that we're making for the EMS and the fire.
And does that mean we gotta redo the agreement between the town?
And that's.
Okay, I'm where I'm going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she may not have the.
That, that's where I'm going, I mean.
Yeah, so for, for, for dates, you guys have in mind, if you saw the paperwork that I sent out. Um, they have in here prepaid for the chassis fifteen days after contract signing deducts. Seventy thousand, I think that's for the full price. I wanna say it's forty thousand for the chassis. Um, so fifteen, fifteen days after we sign a contract, that would be due.
The forty, just forty thousand?
For the, is what it deducts.
Oh, that's what deducts off six hundred.
Six hundred thousand, five hundred.
So five forty.
Yeah.
Okay. Or five sixty, I mean, okay.
Yeah, and then, then the five would be like February of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So we're looking at potentially, depending on how quickly that conversation goes with Marlene, putting this on the agenda for the next meeting along with the ordinance first draft.
Because we're not gonna, I mean, are you gonna go, when are you guys gonna order?
And we're gonna have to have some meetings to go through specs and fine tune that.
So you're, you're not gonna order them before June twenty-seventh?
Okay, so we're pushing that date, that's why I was trying to get.
Yeah, so.
The ordinance.
The council has their time, you know, so for, if you guys, if we have an ordinance in place by the beginning of July, we're set.
We just need to make sure we're all working together because us putting the spec together and the numbers they spent out, I don't even think they do thirty-day quotes anymore without fifteen-day quotes now. Because the, the number goes up. So we kinda have to make all those target dates.
See why you wouldn't wanna start that work if there wasn't.
It's bored.
A council saying, yeah, we're gonna find this money.
So we've, we've identified resources financially right now to move forward, but step number one, coming on the backside of this meeting is. Resolve the payment issue with Marlene and talk about how that's distributed and that may lead to a further discussion about. Realigning EMS contributions. Number two, once we have that conversation in place, I've gotta communicate with you guys, but you should probably start. Heads up beyond the specs anyway. That's gonna release you through a communication. I'm gonna be on vacation next week, but I'll try to get some communication going. And when I get back, it'll be a priority to get in play with Marlene. So I'll probably hit you guys up at the end of this month. Um, we'll have the ordinance drafted for July. Just leave it open to that, but we'll get that on the books fast. And then, um, Bobby's point is remaining a communication after this meeting as we move forward. When I get back. Timeout, Wes. So, um, am I missing anything in that kind of? Checkbox to move forward?
No.
Sounds like.
Clarified a lot by then.
Okay. My opinion. All right, guys?
I don't think I, anybody have anything more for the fire department? Okay, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, appreciate all you do.
Have fun reading that document, Bobby.
It's starting last night. I mean, we sent out like a general idea, like here's what we're looking for, you know, we kind of pick one off the shelf and say, here's, here's what we. There's things like a front intake, you know, because we, we draft. Anytime we go on the township, we report things, we have to draft waters. They ask we set up to do that, I think, some of that stuff. You know, they take their canned spec and it. We just have to fine tune it, make sure it fits exactly what we need. Mostly changing things that will increase.
I think we have a ton of volunteers that know that and can do it.
Exactly.
Thank you, guys.
Read too many of those.